If everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and start with our study session on the partnership between Intel, Dell, and Chandler Unified School District. Check your mic over there, Colleen.
Jason, it's Lindsay. I just got on as well.
Okay, welcome. We're just trying to get rolling, so you're on time. We're getting the mic issue worked out.
We can't have a presentation without a technology issue, so I'm sure there'll be more tonight. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Mr. Narducci, I am honored to be here tonight to share information about a partnership that aligns with our future goals. A partnership that was developed to address K-12 educational technology challenges and prepare school districts for the needs of the future. In fact, when Mr. Creighton and I were planning for this presentation, we were looking for words to describe how excited we were, and we went through different words: elated, thrilled, and many others, but we really couldn't come up with a word to express ourselves and how excited we are to be here, so I'm going to just stick with excited. You will learn about the various stakeholders involved in this project as we proceed through the presentation, but joining me here tonight, I have Sean Creighton, our Assistant Director of Technology for Chandler Unified. I have our wonderful high school principal here. Not Larry, you're not the principal anymore. Look at that. All right, are we good? I knew that was going to happen. So our high school principal over here, Michael Franklin. We have Larry Rothen here from Intel. He's the Global Education Strategist. Online, we have via Teams, two members of our Dell partners. We have Leah Rogers, the Director of Sales with the Rocky Mountain Region from Dell, and we have Tom Osman, the Educational Strategist online from Dell. This afternoon, we'll take you on a journey of how the partnership between Chandler Unified, Intel, and Dell evolved. We'll discuss the challenges we identified in public education with regards to educational technology and the mission and the vision of the partnership to solve those and address those challenges with a solution that will work for Chandler, for schools in Arizona and across the nation. In May of 2021, we presented the Future Ready Schools Framework at the Governing Board Retreat. At the center of this framework is personalized student learning. As you may recall, there are seven key areas we're doing work in, and they're called gears, and those are the colored areas around the learning, the center of learning. They include data and privacy, robust infrastructure, use of space and time. Curriculum instruction and assessment, professional learning.
You need to be closer to the mic.
Professional learning, budget and resources, and community partnerships. As part of this framework, we, part of the process, we developed a district steering committee, and part of that district steering committee involves community partnerships with City of Chandler, Chandler Gilbert Community College, ASU Prep Digital, Waymo, and Intel. And in this district committee, as we were looking at assessing where we were and we wanted to go, we talked about what students needed to do, what instruction needed to look like to achieve our goal of personalized student learning. That students needed to have access to anywhere, anytime learning, that we needed robust devices that allowed students to create things and personalize their learning experiences, and what did those look like? And as we talked about that as a committee, we also talked about what challenges public education face for technology implementation. So in order to reach that goal of future-ready, of personalized learning and high-quality learning experience for the 21st century, we have to address these challenges, and these challenges aren't specific to just Chandler. They're specific, they are, all of Arizona's schools encountered these challenges, along with schools across the nation. And when we talk about the goal of personalized student learning, we talked about the anywhere, anytime. We have to address the digital divide. We have to acknowledge that some of our students don't have devices at home, they don't have connectivity at home, and it could be either or or both. And when we're looking at implementations, we have to address that. We also have to acknowledge that we're limited in our IT resources in public education. For example, in Chandler, we have 50 staff members in our IT department, including ed tech, and we serve 44,000 students and 6,000 employees, so that's about 50,000 folks that we support. Companies such as Intel has approximately 5,000 IT employees to serve 100,000 employees and support them. So the resources in public education look a little different, and as you get to smaller school districts, that may not be even what we have in Chandler. So those conversations took place. There's a disparity in IT resources across all, whether it's, you know, our elementary, there's different devices that we've pushed out. You have iPads, you have Google devices, you have Windows devices, and we have to support all those different models, along with, recently, we've adopted a lot of digital curriculum, and, you know, with COVID, there's a lot more digital assets, and how do we support that and get the right devices in front of students that allow them to have the best learning experience? And again, this isn't just a Chandler issue, this is an issue that goes across the nation. We also talked about, there's different price models. If I buy one device versus 10,000, I'm going to get a price difference, and how do we address that, and how do we create more equity among school districts? We talked about cybersecurity. It's been front and center in the news. You've seen, public education has been attacked, ransomware, those different things. How do we use our IT resources to protect our network, our students, and our devices? And then, of course, even right before this, I was talking to Mr. Narducci, sustainability, that we have grants, we have lots of different things going on, that we've saturated devices for kids, and a lot of districts have moved to one-to-one, but how do we sustain that? How do we keep that in the learning environment and sustain that in a fiscal sense? And the most important conversation we had is, we've had lots of one-to-one implementations around us, but the professional learning piece is where you really see the change. How do you use that technology to impact instruction and really change experiences for students and teachers? So as we were talking in this committee, through what we wanted for students and all the challenges that were faced, Intel leveraged their relationship with one of their manufacturers, and that was Dell, and we came to the table with, how do we, what do we do? What is our vision? How do we take a look at what's going on and create a solution that would bring all of these challenges together and address them? So as part of the partnership, we did what was called a client device assessment, and Dell performed this for us, and what they wanted to do is, before we went in and tried to solve a problem, we wanted to make sure we have the data and the information about how we deployed devices in IT. And as we started to have those conversations, we looked at all the different pieces of an IT deployment. You have the actual device, you have the security of the device, you have the logistics. Connectivity wasn't even a conversation that was in IT deployment, but in order to get to personalized learning, that's something we needed to address. And then the curriculum software and professional development weren't a normal part of IT deployment. That was something that happened in a different department and was solved by different individuals. And this client device assessment looked at our whole process. So when we ordered from the manufacturer, to the point that it got in front of students and teachers, what was that process like, and what were improvements that Dell could make to that process, and how could we put something together that wasn't all of these different fragmented pieces? How could we come together with an integrated solution that addressed devices, that addressed connectivity for students, that addressed security, and also included conversations about what software would be used on the devices, how would we use it in the learning experience, and then how do we provide the support for teachers in order to change that learning experience? So we continued to have those conversations, and we all developed a vision to move from this fragmented, where different pieces were being taken care of by different departments or different processes, into a more comprehensive solution. And this integrated solution would address all of the challenges we identified during the previous conversations. So if we could come up to this package that addressed connectivity, that provided a device for every student, we streamlined the deployment, we maximized our resources, we really could focus on what our goals are, and that's actually the teaching and learning that happens in the classroom, that we weren't, the IT deployment wasn't the barrier to focus our efforts on the personalized learning experience. So we came together, we came up with this mission, we wanted this integrated solution, so what would that look like? And in August of 2021, we came together as a leadership team, Intel, Dell, and Chandler Unified came to the table. We talked about the mission and the vision. How do we test this? What do we need to do? There's been one-to-one implementations all over the country, but we're not seeing the change that we want to see. We're not seeing that instructional change. So what, how could we do this different? And through these conversations, a proof of concept was developed, and we decided that we needed to test at a high school, and we selected Chandler High School. And Mr. Franklin came to the table also in those conversations, and what we would do in that one-to-one implementation is create this ed tech as a service package that included tech services, professional development, a device that supported the learning environment, not just what they're doing today, but what they needed to do in the future, and we'd call it ed tech as a service, and implement that proof of concept at Chandler High School. So we had our mission, we had our vision, we got together as leaders, and we said, okay, this is a proof of concept, what do we do now? What is the commitment that we need to this? And we are so pleased to announce that Intel and Dell came to the table, and they are donating $1.6 million to this project in hardware and services in order to see this proof of concept through and test this at Chandler High School. Our commitment will be in our device purchase. That is on the board agenda tonight as an action item, and between the services and hardware donation and this device purchase, we'll implement a one-to-one model at Chandler High School, and we will look at the implementation from the time that it leaves the manufacturer till it hits teachers' hands, and all the support and services that need to be there in order for us to focus on professional learning. We are currently right now in the planning stages of that implementation, and Sean Creighton is here tonight to talk about all the collaboration that is happening with our schools, with Intel and Dell.
Thank you. So you've heard a lot about the why for this project, and now you're going to hear a little bit more about the who and the what. So like Colleen said, we're in the collaborative planning phase. There are regular meetings happening between district stakeholders, Chandler High School stakeholders, Intel and Dell stakeholders, to really make sure that we're on the right path for success. So there's just weekly, sometimes multiple times a week, interactions between those groups, you know, again, making sure that we're on the right track. So that's going to happen all the way through this quarter. Our target is to have the implementation ready to go by January, so that we can kind of roll things out in the spring. So that's a rough idea of the timeline there. We want to kind of give you some idea of the people that are involved in this as well. So you can see the list of people involved, again, at the district level and at Chandler High School leadership. Here's a list of the people involved on the Intel side, including Mr. Rothen, who's here tonight, and then here's a list of the folks who are here from Dell, and you saw Leah and Tom introduced earlier. So when you think back to all of the challenges that were mentioned earlier by Colleen, again, those aren't challenges that are particular to Chandler, they're challenges that every district in the country really faces when they're doing this kind of thing. And we have some really bright people in the district that tackle these problems all the time. But now to have the minds behind, you know, from two really huge industry leaders in this space with Dell and Intel to help us tackle those issues, like Colleen said, it kind of leaves us at a loss for words with how cool that is. There's lots of districts, I think, across the country that would be pretty envious if they heard about the partnerships and the support that we're getting from these groups. So we're very, very grateful for that, and we do want to kind of turn things over real quick and let Leah Rogers go ahead and speak to what's happening here, too. And we're going to hope that we don't get feedback. Sorry. One second, Leah, hold on. We can't hear you yet. Okay, let's try that again.
Okay, no problem.
Yep.
Some back?
You're good.
Okay. I hear feedback. I'm wondering, you do too, Tom? Okay, wait, it might be gone. We should be good. Can you all still hear me? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, you guys are going to mute. Okay, no problem. Got it. Well, hi, everyone. I'm Leah Rogers, a former classroom teacher, vice principal and principal, and currently I sit in the role of Director at Dell Technologies, and I've had the pleasure of working with this extended team at both Dell and Intel to support an identified opportunity within your district. So I first want to just say thank you. Thank you to this community for your time today, and thank you to folks like Colleen, Frank, Sean, there's so many others that have been absolutely instrumental in keeping this partnership going. So again, thank you so much for the time and opportunity to share the great work that's been happening behind the scenes with you all today. And to set a little bit of context here, Dell has a really strong partnership with Intel, as folks might know, and we've been working collaboratively for a long time to identify some larger challenges that schools face across our great nation. One of those challenges, as Colleen spoke about earlier, is being able to systematically and financially meet the needs of students, faculty, and communities with robust technology and services that ultimately help fosters great access to learning and that promotes 21st century skills and future-ready initiatives. Chandler, obviously, well-aligned to some of these goals. With barriers removed, students have, having access to one-to-one technology, likely additional innovations can occur within teaching and learning environments. Teachers can begin to shift to individualized approaches. Curriculum can become dynamic and personalized, providing opportunities to rethink how students interact with content, peers, and resources. Students can access current information and engage in high-level inquiry and have authentic experiences with technology at hand. These are all critical elements of creating a 21st century learner. Dell and Intel are invested in helping schools and districts solve some of these great challenges with things like device procurement, management, deployment, security, and services, which should ultimately save districts a lot of time and resources. We've been working with the leadership at Chandler Unified School District and also the faculty at Chandler High School to further understand the imminent challenges that this community faces today with getting students more access to learning anywhere, anytime. Easier said than done, right, friends? Through the partnership we've created, our organizations have made a significant financial investment, as you heard Colleen state, into some enhanced hardware solutions with included features like built-in LTE or Wi-Fi connectivity, high-performance capabilities to enhance things like STEM courses, improved security, professional learning for educators, and all of this wrapped with increased services provided by Intel and Dell to reduce the manpower of time and resources spent on technology integration. We look forward to continuing to expand this great partnership and collaboration with you all as we support the Chandler community, and we would certainly appreciate your approval of this pilot. As a result of these efforts, we intend to expand upon the learnings and share the results with other school districts across America, so more can benefit from these outcomes. I will obviously be here if I can help answer any questions, as well as Tom can, from the Dell Technologies team. Again, I just want to thank you for the time today.
Great, thanks, Leah. Appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and switch back to that presentation now. So again, we want to get a little more in detail about the thinking behind some of the things involved in the project, and we don't want to get too into the weeds and, you know, talking about these things, but we do want to focus on a couple of areas that we thought were of interest, and try to tie them back to the Futurity Schools Framework that you saw earlier. So when it comes to devices, again, one of the challenges is we have lots of devices out there, and sometimes those devices are chosen when looking at with the specs, you know, how much RAM is involved, how much hard drive space, and the chips, and, you know, those types of things. And sometimes it's also kind of bang for the buck, because budget is obviously a big reality that we need to take into account when purchasing devices. What we're trying to be a little more focused on with this proof of concept is the student outcomes. What's the right device for what our students and teachers need to accomplish in the classroom and the instructional things that we want them to do? So in tying back to Futurity Schools, there's two gears that that really hits on, which is the curriculum instruction and assessment gear that you see in blue, as well as the robust infrastructure gear that you see in red. So as this group has met and discussed what those needs are, it's helped us to kind of focus down and drill down the devices that might work the best. So the two that we sort of landed on were Dell Latitudes, the 5320 and the 3310. So the 5320 is a newer device. It uses a newer chip architecture called V Pro. We don't need to get too into the weeds again on what V Pro offers, but basically, it's a more integrated chip architecture as far as security, device management, and performance. So it's being used a little bit right now in the business space, and we're curious, and I think so are Dell and Intel, to see what benefits that chipset brings into the education space and how that can really drive instruction there. So that's one of the devices we'll be getting access to. There is a subset of those devices that will also have LTE connectivity built into the device. So we do have students that need to have internet access with these devices at home. Traditionally, in Chandler, that's involved giving them a hotspot that they then use to connect to cell service, and then their laptop will connect to that hotspot. So these devices will have that LTE connectivity built in, so it will take out that need for a hotspot. Again, we're curious to see what improvements that kind of brings to the education experience for our teachers and students. So that's the 5320, and then again, lots of students will get the 3310, which is a more traditional education device. It's rugged, it's built to last, it's built to, not just last physically for a long time, but performance-wise last, and also battery life, it'll kind of get them through the school day, all of those things. So we're excited, again, to see how this process has possibly led to devices that are really well-suited for what our students and teachers will need in the classroom. You've also heard mentioned the services that are being packaged with this. Again, we want to call those back to some gears here, right? So there's two, there's two main gears that those services kind of fall into. Again, under infrastructure, we're getting some things that are coming with the device that we feel are really valuable. One is an etching. So on the case of the device, there will be a laser etched logo for Chandler Unified Schools. That obviously brings some security benefits, right? It might help prevent theft or loss, but we also hope that it will kind of instill a sense of pride in the device, that those kids, you know, that's a Chandler device, and it looks nice because it's got the etching on it, right? So that's a benefit that we're excited about. Asset tagging is a huge part of this process, too. We need to be able to track those devices and, you know, which students have them and what schools they're at and that kind of thing, and that usually involves some inventory asset tagging. Traditionally, that's been handled by us, and so we have to unpack all those devices and apply the asset tags and enter them in the system. That will all be done before the devices even get into our hands. So that's an exciting piece of this package as well. The connection and configuration services, again, traditionally, we get these devices, and then we have to unbox them and apply our district settings to them, make sure they can connect to our district network, make sure that they have district software on them, and kind of reimage them for what works for Chandler. Again, we're excited to have that all handled before we even unbox the device. So again, just making the process more streamlined, so we can get right to the education piece. Multi-pack deployment is a more efficient packaging. Usually, when we get devices like this, they come one per box. So not only does that lead to some environmental, you know, concerns and, you know, waste and things like that, it's also a lot of time for us to unbox, you know, every single device and discard, you know, the styrofoam, the plastic, the manuals that come with all those. But the multi-pack deployment will get 10 devices per package. So again, that might seem like, you know, not a very big deal, but when you cut down on the unpacking, you know, by a factor of 10, that's a huge savings in time and manpower needed to handle those things. So we're excited about those pieces. We'll also get an annual tune-up, which we don't usually get with these devices. So every summer, they'll go back to Dell and Intel, they'll do some work to kind of clean them up and not get quite to a brand-new state, but internally, pretty much new. They'll wipe everything off and kind of get it cleaned up, so that the next school year, they can hit the ground running with those devices. And then as far as support, we get four years of pro support plus and 200 hardware support tickets. So again, taking that piece off the table, having to worry about devices breaking down, how do we handle that? Well, that's built into this package, so that we can get those devices up and running again as quickly as possible, so students can keep learning. So that's the infrastructure side. On the professional learning side, that's the gear in blue on the right. Like Colleen said, that's a huge piece that we're often missing. We don't want to give these devices to students and teachers and say, here you go, you're one-to-one now. What does that mean? What does that unlock? What kind of new things can I do? If we're just having kids take notes on a laptop instead of, you know, paper and pencil, we're kind of missing the boat on what we can really accomplish, right? So this PD is really going to be focused, for teachers, 185 hours of it, on how they can really transform their classroom. This is something that most of them aren't going to be used to, and they might not really understand all of the new ways they can transform their learning and their teaching, having a one-to-one environment. So that PD is going to really focus on that. And then we also get some help from Intel, because we get access to their Skills for Innovation curriculum. So that's another PD module-based type of stuff that will, again, give our teachers the skills they need to pass those skills for innovation on to their students, the critical thinking, the problem-solving types of things that can come with this. So again, we're really excited about this. It's not just about the device, it's about all the extra services that we're getting along with this. When you add up the devices itself, themselves, and the services we're getting with a discount, we're saving about $400 roughly per device with this proof of concept. So we're able to do these new things, innovative things, with a solid discount, which we think is really exciting, too. So to wrap up the desired outcomes of this proof of concept, again, you've heard a lot of this before, we just kind of restate it here at the end. We really want to optimize the deployment aspects of this. Again, we don't want to bottleneck between ordering the device, getting the device, and then what needs to be done to it to get it in the hands of students. So we really want to try to get that streamlined as much as possible, and then learn from those things that, and hopefully, apply those lessons to a larger deployment down the future, if that comes to fruition. We want the student and teacher experience to be based on learning and not have to focus on, oh, the Wi-Fi is not working, oh, my keyboard's broken, right? We want to take all those things off the table, so teachers and students can really focus on what they're there for, which is learning, right? They happen to be using this tool, but we want to take all those extra factors off of there and just make sure that that tool works for them, so they don't have to worry about that. We want to target our professional learning, so that teachers, again, can really maximize that one-to-one environment and do some transformational things in the classroom. And then finally, we want to be really intentional about our device selection and kind of have the learning process drive that selection as much as possible. So that's kind of a summary there. We have one more summary we want to hear from Intel to kind of wrap up the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the Governing Board, and Superintendent Narducci. My name is Michael Campbell, and I serve as the Head of Education at Intel. On behalf of the entire Intel family, I'm excited to express how thrilled we are to partner with Chandler Unified School District and Dell on this very project. You know, Intel, we're passionate about education, and as you're aware, we have a long history of valued partnerships with the Chandler Unified School District. And I'm happy to share with you that, Intel, we're committed to ensuring the success of this project. What we are doing in Chandler has the highest attention of our Executive Vice President Gregory Bryant, and even our CEO, Pat Gelsinger himself. They are excited to see the results of our work, and we're committed to ensuring the success of this pilot and learning with you. You know, at Intel, our purpose is to create world-changing technology that improves the lives of every person on the planet and this project is no exception. We believe what is happening with this pilot in Chandler Unified School District and Chandler High School could transform the way that school districts across the country and even the world ensures all students have access to the right devices and break down the digital divide in a way that is both cost-effective and sustainable. I truly feel that this project will be a north star for the way that public and private partnerships can address the educational technology problems facing our kids, teachers and school districts. Again, on behalf of the entire Intel family, we're all in on this project and look forward to working with Dell and the passionate educators and leaders in Chandler Unified School District. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. What questions do you have?
I think I have one. I'm not sure, maybe you answered it. So why are the computers going to be sent back to Intel? I mean Dell?
It's a service that they'll store them for 30 days, take them back. Normally, we would have to take a look at them, do we need to delete any profiles, make sure there's no history on there. So they'll take care of that for us and then check them back out to us. So we don't, as an IT department, have to do that ourselves.
So how many?
4,000.
Wow.
And Mr. Wirth, that's also because the next, this four-year cycle of the investment you make, this four-year cycle actually will have those computers coming back and picking it up with the next class. So that next class would pick it up. So we want to make sure those computers are clean, wiped, cleaned for them so that they're starting with a fresh device for that new year. So we're doing a very, their plan has a very good cycle piece to it with a four-year cycle included.
First, I wanted to say thank you so much to everyone from your department, everyone from Intel and from Dell for all this hard work. I did have, as usual, multiple questions. So can you explain a little bit more about the funding and what that looks like and the length of that funding?
The donation from Intel and Dell? It is in the device that we are purchasing and part of that hardware and then the services that are provided, the support tickets, the packaging, the taking the device back and wiping it, all of that is what the donation is going to.
Okay. And we don't have like an estimate on what that amount is, or do we?
I can certainly try to estimate with our staff salaries what we're saving there or what it would be in a typical IT deployment. I can try to estimate it, but I don't have exact figures there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brunner, also the devices are not the same. So we would have to elevate the cost of the Dell device to what it, or the devices that we were previously buying to make it an apples-to-apples. But at the end of the day, we're very, their price is very competitive with everything that we have to do. But Colleen and I can certainly put a cost-benefit analysis together if you'd like.
Thank you. And I was wondering if there was a plan for including teachers in the decision-making and the feedback process, maybe some kind of dynamic process that where they can, you know, continually be like, hey, this is an issue, we'd love to do this. Or if someone brainstorm's an idea, is there a way, like a process that's...
Absolutely. So we plan on getting teacher and student feedback, but Mr. Franklin can speak to Sean, has been working with him and Renee Clancy at their site for teacher feedback. They've done parent surveys, student surveys, teacher surveys. So the teachers have been part of this whole process and if you'd like to hear from him, I'm sure he'll come up here and share that with you.
Our team has been very involved in this since it was first brought to our attention. Within a week, we sent a survey out to our staff. Within an hour, we had 10 teachers that were wanting to be a part of this one-to-one tech team. They're really excited about this avenue. In our surveys and our teacher surveys, we have 85% of our staff is 100% like, let's get going, why haven't we been doing this already? Our teacher team of 10 teachers and two administrators, including my dean, Ms. Clancy, have been meeting bi-weekly since late August in terms of building and bridging, trying to make sure that we're considering all the factors, taking feedback from our teachers, getting feedback from our families, from our previous rollout with technology through COVID. So our folks have been very much a part of this process.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I also had a question regarding wireless access at home. I know the city added some during COVID and I was wondering if we have that solved or...
Yeah, so we have, we'll have two options. As Sean discussed, there's a device that has LTE in it for students. We want to see how that works for students where it's included. And then we also, through another grant that we wrote, have hotspots that students have access to so that we want to compare the experience between LTE in the computer and a hotspot. So we have both of those and again, working with Michael, we are working to identify those students that have that need.
I was just curious about any student files? Are they going to be in a cloud or like, and how does Dell and Intel have access to those and any, you know, security with that?
They won't have access to our student files. Those are, we manage those in our, they are in the cloud, but it isn't where outside parties have access to that. That's our environment.
Okay. And then the 185 hours of PD, is that like a just-in-time kind of PD where they can go and get stuff off of videos when they need it or is that...
It can be. It can be customized. Tom can speak to that specifically. We did a couple of things. We surveyed the staff to see where they need support and we'll use that information, that data to work with Tom. So Sean and Tom have been working together along with their tech team to determine what that looks like for Chandler High. So it's truly customizable. It could be just-in-time, it could be coaching, it could be functional training. You have some teachers that just need how to navigate, it's a touchscreen with their students, how am I going to use that? So that is fully customizable for our needs here in Chandler.
Tom, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Me?
Can Tom here?
Yeah, Tom, do you want to speak to that?
Hold on. One second, Tom.
That's transition. All right, Tom, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
You're on, you're good.
We don't, we don't do like catalog kind of PD. So everything that we're going to build out in support of the Chandler staff is going to be customizable. It's going to be both asynchronous, synchronous, there'll be coaching, there'll be resource curation. When school districts go one-to-one with such robust technology, content has to be designed differently, too, right? Like Leah mentioned. So one of the things we're excited about is to really work with some of those teachers, work with Sean and some of the content leaders and, you know, build out a customized plan for, you know, different teachers in different places because everyone is in a different place with their journey on this. So we're just excited to get going.
And my last question, how will the success of this program be measured? Like what exactly are we looking to find? What are we looking for? What are we measuring for this?
Well, we will start with the learning experience. So we'll do surveys with teachers and staff to see how, is there a difference in the device that we provided that they've used before? We will look at outcomes that we are working with future-ready schools and on the curriculum instruction is, how does this change the learning experience? Do students have access, more access, or is it more personalized? Am I changing what I'm doing with my time as a teacher in the classroom when I have one-to-one? Do I have more freed up time to spend tutoring students? So we will identify with Dr. Marshall and the curriculum department, what are we looking for in educational outcomes? Well, of IT outcomes, did it minimize some of the issues that we've had before? Did we have to increase staff? Did it help us with our staffing? So each of us will have those outcomes and we continue to work on those in our communication channels. Intel has their outcomes they're looking for along with Dell to see if this entire packaged service really met those. And so we haven't flushed all those out. We meet on teams independently and that is, we're currently in that process to establish those metrics.
Could we possibly get a glance at those when you have them set?
Absolutely. I think we plan on coming back as we further this process and get into the implementation to come back to you with those, the data from the surveys and our outcomes.
Thank you so much.
I had a couple of questions. First, you know, the main, you know, as a parent, you're kind of worried about accountability for these and kids lose things and break things all the time. So two questions. One is, what about accountability for devices? How is that managed?
So as we talked about, the asset will be in a system, an asset manager, and the device will be assigned to the student. So we'll have that piece, that data piece of it. We'll work with leadership, work with Dr. Gilbert to develop policies. We've looked at a lot of one-to-one districts. What do we do to have that accountability and how do we, we know there's going to be accidents and different things that happen. So we're in the process of developing those one-to-one policies and procedures. And Mr. Franklin and I just had a conversation on Monday is we're hoping that the learning experience is such at Chandler High that students want to bring it every day and there's, you know, you have that accountability from the engaging learning experience that are happening at the high school.
Okay. Second question for me, what's the process going to look like to the parents? Like if you're a parent, you have a student at Chandler High School and your freshman gets a computer, what do you do or what do you have to do or what do you have to do for them?
It's no different. We've checked out during COVID, so we have some processes in place. The students have to send an AUP, we have an agreement. So it will be communication, we'll work with Chandler High. We're planning on a kickoff event so parents can be informed and I know Michael's been working with his parents to educate them on this process. So it will be communication and some documentation.
Okay, that was all the questions I had. Barbara, Lindsay, do you guys have questions for Colleen?
I don't think so at this time. This is Barb. Just want to thank everyone for the great presentation and all of the work that's going into this. Big thanks to Intel and Dell and our IT department and Colleen. This is going to be a real big thing, I think, for our district and I am very excited about hearing about outcomes and see how this can transform education for our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Lindsay, did you have any questions? We may not have Lindsay right now. Do you guys have anything else for us right now?
Before, Colleen, before you end, Mr. Raul, just a couple of comments. You know, first of all, a proof of concept, we're moving cautiously through this. There's been a lot of time spent on this, not only with Dell and Intel, with teams, but collaborating together. As a matter of fact, we have the top collaborators at Intel and we have the top collaborators at Dell. I had the opportunity today actually to be invited to a conversation with Michael Dell and talking about this whole proof of concept as well, but he was also talking to educational and city and civic leaders across the nation today. And the question I asked was, what are the solutions right now for affordable technology, especially in the world of ESAR where we're buying more technology? And what's going to happen when that money disappears? What's our sustainability of being able to have a high-quality computer that really does the work for a 21st century learner? And the big thing that we have to look at is, we're going to be bringing you in our Journey 2030, the profile of a 21st century graduate. What does that student look like? Well, before we even look at that, we have to look at, how do they learn in the 21st century? And so we've got to also look at, what does a 21st century instruction look like? And I think, I think places that made mistakes put one over the other. You give them the device, they'll learn what to do. No, we have to know what to do with the device that we're learning with. And this partnership has shown anything but the fact that we are going to learn along the way, we're going to collect plenty of feedback, make adjustments, but also provide benchmarks that we're saying, what do we need to do? Do we need to move? Do we need to, do we need to do something differently? And both Dell and Intel have given us people that will be with this concept through the whole phase, which is really important because we have the biggest names, Chandler Unified School District, Dell and Intel. And yes, I put us with you guys there. To have that commitment from them is just amazing and we have not been anything but guided along the way. I want to thank Mr. Fletcher, Ms. Flannery, Mr. Creighton and Mr. Franklin for being bold enough and creative enough to move forward with this because it's intimidating when you're with these, with Dell and Intel coming and being interested in what you want to do and what you want to move forward. One-to-one technology, it's not a thing of the past, technology's not going away. We've got to figure the best way to move forward and the most sustainable way to do it and I'm glad to do it with this partnership. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, guys. We're going to take a short break and then we'll be able to begin the IB presentation by Mr. Schluter.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. If everybody's ready, we're going to get started with the presentation on the International Baccalaureate.
Madam President, members of the board, as we continue to identify programming that both meets the needs of our diverse learners and attracts additional families to our district, Mrs. Kinghorn and her team at Anderson Elementary have begun the investigation and analysis of implementing an International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program at Anderson Elementary. This school-wide implementation will build and strengthen the inquiry and critical thinking skills of all students. Mrs. Kinghorn and her team will present to you tonight the steps they've engaged in up to this point and future steps and plans for school-wide implementation of the Anderson Elementary IB PYP programming. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Anderson team.
Thank you. Good evening, Governing Board, Mr. Narducci and Cabinet. It is with great excitement that I introduce myself as the proud principal of Anderson Elementary. My name is Kristen Kinghorn and I am joined here tonight by a few of my dedicated teachers and parents and family members in the audience. And together, we look forward to helping you learn about our school, the amazing students and families we serve, and how we intend to prepare our students to be successful for the global world that awaits them and to be future-ready after graduation by exploring the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. And because it is an international program, you will see words spelled differently on the screen. I promise you, I do know how to spell. So many things led us to exploring the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program for Anderson Elementary. This is my fourth year in the district and at Anderson and throughout those four years, we have worked on developing our culture, our climate, developing our mission statement and really honing in on the learning about our students and the families that we serve. With school choice being so competitive in Arizona, we know that we need to identify ourselves in this competitive market. Currently, Anderson Elementary does not offer an identified program such as CTA, TOPS or Gifted. Most importantly, we wanted to explore a program that aligned with our district and our school mission statements. As you will see shortly, Anderson Elementary has seen declining enrollment over the years as our neighborhood is older and beginning to age out. We know we need to capture students to get them back into our school and into our district. Anderson Elementary is a natural feeder to Chandler High School, which currently implements the Middle Years Program as well as the Diploma Program, and we want to create that pathway to the Middle Years Program. And lastly, we believe by going down this road, we will be able to increase the rigor being taught in the classroom with a global perspective. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Haradia Flores, one of our third grade teachers at Anderson.
Thank you for having us. So who's the learner we serve today? When we think about our students sitting in our classroom today, it's a different learner than we had five, 10, 15, 20 years ago. I might not have been around then, but the student we serve today has never known a world without technology. Whether it's a computer, tablet, cellphone, our students understand how to navigate technology when they're coming into our classrooms. With all the access to technology, they're used to having their questions answered instantly. Where we, where were we before Google? So they want that information fast and it's our job as educators to ensure students not only master grade-level content and standards, but they learn how to ask and answer questions with more than one answer. We believe it's of the utmost importance to give our students the opportunity to ask questions about content, to problem-solve ways and to find their answers. This makes learning meaningful to them as students and allows it, the learning to stick. We service and educate the 21st century learner. A 21st century learner is a communicator, collaborator, creative and innovative. We have an obligation to foster those skills and offer a program that allows them to think outside the box and utilize these skills every day at our school. And I'm going to turn it over, is it, to Beth Pedia.
Okay, as you can see, our enrollment has declined over the years, over the last five years. And on a personal, I have been at Anderson involved since 1998 when I came to the district and my kids were at Anderson Elementary and I have been a teacher as well in the district for that long. And I have seen the enrollment go down as the neighborhood... well in the district for that long. And I have seen the enrollment go down as the neighborhood has aged out. So that's just my personal note on that. But out of our 499 students residing in our boundaries, only 267 students currently attend Anderson. We know that many of our students choose to attend another CUSD school with special programming such as CTA, Goodman, or Knox. According to the demographers' report, the projected enrollment for Anderson for the 2030-31 school year is sitting at 468 students. So we have larger classes leaving than new kindergartners enrolling at the current time. For open enrollment, in the 2021 school year, 45% of our enrollment was open enrollment, with 57 students being out of boundary, 127 coming from other CUSD schools. With Anderson sitting so close to Mesa and Kyrene borders, we believe we are in the prime spot to attract, capture, and retain students outside of the district. We know that we lose our elementary students to charter schools in the elementary years, but they come back in the high school years. So if we can keep them attracted to our school at the elementary level, and then hopefully they will stay through high school. And with our open enrollment strong and being a feeder to Chandler High, which is our IB program, having that pathway, we will be able to attract and retain more students to Anderson Elementary and CUSD.
So after reflecting on our enrollment data and wanting to have a proactive approach for Anderson, we started to have discussion about what we could bring to Anderson that aligned with our current mission, which of course is to empower all students with the knowledge, skills, and attitude necessary to excel in college, career, and life. When you look at our core values as a district, one that stands out to us is, that's extremely important, is the value of excellence. We know we have excellence across our district and happening in all of our schools. We believe that we have an obligation to our students and our families to raise that bar of excellence at Anderson. We looked at our current vision and mission, and some words that will stand out when you see our vision and mission at Anderson are empowering, resilient, problem solvers, inspired, and taking risks. These words are extremely important. As we know, many schools already offer a rigorous academic program. However, we're currently preparing our kids for jobs that do not exist. We want them to be able to solve problems that we don't know our problems yet. We need our students to think critically outside of the box, take risks, fail, and be resilient and trying again to find a solution. We believe it is crucial to offer a rigorous academic program that is globally competitive. Therefore, it was important that we looked at our current vision and mission at Anderson and at Chandler Unified to find a program that aligns with our current beliefs and not fit something in that would not match with what we have developed. And that led us to the International Baccalaureate Program. So there's a lot of words up there, and I've highlighted and read some of the ways that the IB mission parallels our mission here in Chandler. We want caring young people. We want to offer our students a rigorous instruction in an environment that fosters compassion and creates lifelong learners. We want this to extend beyond Anderson, beyond CUSD, and truly prepare our students for the ever-changing global world that awaits them. With the IB mission statement once presented, a question that is asked is how does this change Anderson? And this will give us a unified approach in how we teach rigor to our students and how we really hone in on those best teaching and learning practices, along with how we hold ourselves accountable by creating assessments to master, to measure mastery. So how was this idea explored? As you can see from the table of events, we wanted to be proactive in this approach and be thoughtful and meaningful in our process. We want to have a plan not only to attract and retain students at, to Anderson, but to the district as well. You can see here, we used a variety of stakeholders as we explored the Primary Years Program. The nice thing about the Primary Years Program is that currently there are five authorized schools in Arizona: Australia Mountain and Goodyear, Madison Simus in the Madison School District, Mountain View Preparatory in the Cottonwood Oak Creek District, Quail Run Elementary in Paradise Valley, and Summit Academy in Mesa. Currently, there are two schools in candidacy: Anasazi Elementary in Scottsdale and Global Academy of Phoenix in Elahumbra. So therefore, we have a good way to capture students, not only by being the first IB Primary Years Program here in Chandler, but attracting students from Kyrene, Tempe, and the East Valley. So as you can see from the chart, discussion started between Mr. Narducci and myself back in March of 2021. And we both believe that in order for this to be successful, it needs to be a ground-up process and to really have buy-in from our staff and our community. Since last March, various stakeholders have met with other IB schools. We've had discussions with IB principals and IB coordinators. And earlier this year, a team of us attended a Category 1 training at Chandler High School on what the IB program is. So thank you, Mr. Franklin, for including us in that training. So here is a breakdown of the IB program. The Primary Years Program is, is unique because it goes all the way down to three years old. And we currently have a pre-K class at our school. So we currently have those four-year-olds already attending Anderson. And it builds to the Middle Years Program, to the Diploma Program. So we have the potential to build the capacity before kids get to that Middle Years Program, to use the common knowledge, skills, and concepts. So when they enter the Diploma Program or pre-IB at the high school, the amount of rigor isn't going to make some students feel they don't want to go that route. We want our kids to critically think and problem-solve, so we have the potential to start at the age of three if we ever chose to go that way. So we're coming to you tonight just to express our interest in expanding the IB program to the Primary Years at Anderson Elementary. Mr. Franklin and the Chandler High team have successful, have a successful IB program, and they're currently evaluating their program on ways to improvement, improve it. We believe by starting at the elementary level, we will see an increase in the number of students completing the Diploma Program. During the 2021 school year, there were 86 course, career, or diploma candidates. All of the diploma candidates are attending a four-year university and received over $8 million in scholarships. So we know it's a very successful program happening there. I'm going to bring up Ms. Baxter, our Dean of Students.
Good evening. So the Primary Years Program addresses the needs of the whole child, not just the academic and physical needs, but the social, emotional needs. And an important part of us is the cultural part. So we serve a very diverse population consisting of 48% Hispanic, 30% white, 7% Asian, 6% Black, 7% multiple, and 3% Native. So this primary programs, Years Program, it aligns with our mission and vision at the district and the site level and fosters inquiry in everything we do. So the next slide, it's going to be a nice visual of the breakdown.
So sometimes you just need pictures to look at instead of words, right? We're, we're elementary. We like our visuals. And so this is a little breakdown of the Primary Years Program. And while it is a nationally recognized program, at the heart of it is that it is student-centered. And it's research-based, it's widely recognized, recognized, and uses an inquiry-based approach to help students learn for understanding. We know when students walk out of our schools, we want them to have a deep understanding, not only of content, but a deep understanding of how to apply what they have learned. Recently, the IB program celebrated its 50th anniversary, so it's still a fairly new program. It uses best practices along with research-based practices to help teachers and schools create lessons that will help students to be successful not only at a national level, but also an international level.
The Primary Years Program is a comprehensive approach to the teacher and learner, an international curriculum model that gives us a sound, sound guidelines of what our students should learn in order to be successful in the next grade level and beyond. We know the importance of consistency. If you were to ask myself and my colleagues the definition of rigor, you're probably going to get 25 different definitions. The IB program helps us to define what rigor will look like in every classroom across our school, so all students have access to the same levels of, high levels of learning. At the elementary level, we currently teach subjects in isolation. We have our reading block and our math block and introducing concepts to students, but not really making connections to them on how they fit, they all fit together in this world. The PYP model allows for interdisciplinary teaching through an inquiry-based learning. And I can just say that there's a buzz across our campus with some excitement about this IB program. And we have teachers already kind of dipping in to wanting to try some of these approaches with student inquiry. And it's increasing our levels of student engagement and excitement for learning. And on top of that, our teachers are taking risks and they're excited about their teaching. So it's, it's a really exciting, comprehensive approach to providing our students an education that they deserve. I am now going to invite our wonderful special education teacher, Mrs. Steen, up to speak more to it.
At the heart of the Primary Years Program is a commitment to structured inquiry as a vehicle for learning the five essential elements of knowledge, concepts, skills, attitudes, and actions. It's important to remember that through the IB program, all of our teachers will receive professional development training to ensure that consistency across the school. And the really neat thing about this is those five elements start in the Primary Years Program, continue on through the Middle Year Program, as well as the Diploma Program. So what we're really doing is we are building that structured framework for that to happen and for our young, young children to be able to build upon those five elements as they grow.
So this is the IB Primary Years Program cycle that has the six IB themes on the outside of the rings, rings and the academic areas on the inside. The six themes you see on the outside are how we organize ourselves, sharing the planet, who we are, where we are in place and time, how we express ourselves, and how the world works. Students explore these six themes through plans of inquiry created by our teachers incorporating the subject areas. And one of the areas you'll see there with science and the arts and mathematics is language. And so part of the IB program is that world language piece. So we would look to offer a world's language or culture exploration class at Anderson Elementary. We've talked a lot about inquiry throughout this presentation, and here is just one visual to help explain different types of student inquiry. Currently, in many classrooms, you see a lot of structured inquiry and controlled inquiry. The teacher is taking on the lead of the classroom, presenting questions, and the class works together to answer the questions that the teacher has asked. In the Primary Years Program, we are looking at how the students can really take action and ownership of their learning. I recently read a book called The Curious Classroom. And in it, students, the teachers were talking about how excited their students were coming to school. And one of the things that author said was that the students' questions were being asked. And the students knew that every day they came to school, their questions were going to be asked, or they were going to given the tools and the resources on how to answer their questions. When I talked to a principal at another Primary Years Program school, and he's about, ready to open his fourth school in another state, he said the best part of this process was watching his teachers and himself as a principal grow and learn alongside of his students. And when we talk about creating lifelong learners, there's a perfect example. And then you may ask...
Yes. You may be asking yourself, what does this look like for our students who receive special education services? Or maybe you're not. But I know that was the very first question that I asked myself when I was introduced to the IB program. Being able to ask, ask questions is the heart of the Primary Years Program, but what about the students that do not have the language skills to be able to formulate a question? Thinking about the whole picture of IB can be a little bit intimidating and daunting. But for myself, when I start to break it up into smaller, more manageable parts, that helps with my understanding of it. I think this slide provides an excellent visual of the varied levels of supports. One thing that you will notice is the swimmers are swimming in the entire time. However, the level of support provided by the swimming coach changes over time. When I envision this for the population of students that we serve as special educators, I am so incredibly excited to be able to help facilitate their learning with the IB platform. I would anticipate that I may be spending a bit more time in the water with the, with my focus being, being able to systematically teach the skill of asking questions. I feel so fortunate to work with an amazing group of colleagues. Specifically, this year, I am working with two excellent third-grade teachers using a co-teaching model in the area of writing in order to help our, our thriving students. In the general education classroom, lots of, lots of business going on, lots of collaboration going on as well. I would anticipate that the Primary Years Program is going to lend itself to a co-teaching model. What a great way to help support our students who may need a little more time at the structured inquiry level and at the controlled inquiry level.
So what does IB offer that enhances Anderson? Well, if you put a nice bow on it, IB enhances the rigor of the academics being offered, accountability of our students, how we make the information relevant and relatable to our ever-changing student population, and most importantly, engagement. You cannot have meaningful learning that sticks without having engagement.
So how do we make this happen? So this is a small graphic of the authorization process, and we are all the way over on the left side of the screen. So as you can see from the consideration phase, we're coming to you tonight explaining our want to apply for candidacy for the Primary Years Program. Once that application is submitted and accepted, we remain in candidacy phase for up to three years. The main reason for that is that during this time, our staff would go through professional development, work with an IB coordinator to write plans of inquiry with support from the IB Regional Office. You get a lot of support from the IB office to ensure that you're on the right track and you're being able to stick to this timeline. After effectively implementing our plans of inquiry, reflecting on them and making necessary changes, we would apply for authorization. So as we continue with this process, we would look to forming partnerships with local businesses such as Intel, Northrop Grumman, as well as with local universities who have a lot to offer our students when it comes to the IB, IB themes and the application piece of learning. There is some additional costs when it comes to the IB Primary Years Program. Teacher professional development has to be given by the IB office. There is an application candidacy fee. We would need to hire additional staffing for a primary year school coordinator, as well as for that world language exploration class. The candidacy fee that we would have to pay every year we are in candidacy, as well as the verification visit cost. And we would look to make use of results-based funding, replication funds to assist with covering costs, in addition to further seeking out some of those community partnerships that we just talked about, grants, and the support for sustainability of the programming needs.
So we ask, we ask parents, when your child leaves CUSD, what do you want for your child? They identify things such as real prob, real-life problem solving, leadership, creative thinking, bilingual, and critical thinking. If you look at the IB learner profile, the aim of the IB programs is to develop internationally-minded people who recognize our common humanity and shared gardeniaship of the planet, help to create a better and more peaceful world. So IB learners strive to be inquiries, knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, and balanced, and reflective, all the things that are any parent wants for their child.
This beautiful graphic also came from Chandler High School. Just some amazing talent over there. We're the astronauts. So we also surveyed our staff, and we asked one question. And it was, are you on board to bring the IB Primary Years Program to Anderson Elementary? As you can see, we have about 91% of our staff saying yes, with a few that aren't sure yet. And so when we followed up with those three and asking what's holding you back or why or why not, a lot of it's the unknown. And so how long would this take? What would the professional development look like? Would it be outside of my contract time? And so some of those questions that we would be able to answer along the way. But we have a resilient amount of our staff saying yes. So next steps that we have planned, we currently have three parent meetings scheduled. We are going to do them in person as well as be able to record them. And we will be offering one in Spanish as well to our Spanish families. And we hope to have our application submitted by the end of January, so that we'll know we're in candidacy by the end of next year to help plan for the 2022-23 school year as we look to professional development hiring, as well as beginning those plans of inquiry. as we look to professional development hiring, as well as beginning those plans of inquiry. So you've got a lot of information tonight, and you've heard from a lot of the wonderful staff members at Anderson. And if we had to state one thing about this program and why we believe in it, it's good for kids. We didn't present academic growth data to you, but when you look at the schools that are currently primary years program schools, they are rated at either an A or a B by the Department of Ed, and yes, that is old data, which is why we didn't bring you new data. But when we talked to Quail Ron, and we talked to the principal there, while their demographics have also changed, she said that kids are engaged and their behaviors have gone down. The discipline has gone down because they're engaged in their learning. When we had the trainer at Chandler High School, she was a middle school teacher in Ohio, where 100% of her students are on free and reduced lunch, and those students are going on to attend Harvard, UCLA, Stanford, top universities in the country. So when we look at what we should offer all of our kids, it's a best education program impossible, and we believe in IB. So at this time, I will take your questions, comments, anything you have.
Go ahead, Joel.
I went first last time, go ahead.
Okay, I'll go ahead. So I got a few questions I wrote down. So would Anderson change from being IB and regular programs, or all IB?
It would be all IB, because it's changing the way our teachers teach.
Okay.
So it's not like a program you buy out of a box.
Right, and like we have some CTA schools that are dual, yeah, okay. So then, in the case that anybody didn't want to do it, they would have just moved to a different Chandler school, or I guess they would mostly want to do it, but would they start at kindergarten and add a grade every year, or do you start like the whole school at the same time?
We would start the whole school at the same time, because those teachers are working with an IB coordinator to look at their standards, look at the six IB themes, and write those plans of inquiry, and to be in candidacy, to get out of candidacy into authorization, you have to have a year where you've taught your units, and all grade levels have to teach those units. So it's, we can't make a school authorized only one grade level at a time.
Okay, and so that leads to the next logical question, would, would Anderson Junior need to start working on applying for IB, you know, the year, the year after?
I can speak to that, Mrs. Kinghorn. We've worked with the principal at Anderson to create a bridge program for, you know, they're way down the road here, right? And so they're working with Avid, which Michael Franklin is, we had conversations about how Avid really, really works well with the IB program. It's a supportive students, and Anderson's doing that piece, but they're very interested in creating a bridge for students that move through the Anderson program for their years at Anderson Junior High. While it doesn't deter from what their focus is, that team or a team of individuals would work with our students to bridge them to the MYP program at Chandler, so that pathway would continue through Anderson Junior High, through Chandler. So they won't have to be a total MYP program, because they will just create a bridge. It won't be an MYP program, but a bridge to get them to ninth grade MYP.
Okay, thank you, and thank you guys very much. It's wonderful that you're bringing this to us. Joel, did you have any questions?
Sure. So is the ultimate goal, first of all, I know the IB program's awesome, I understand that, been around the district a long time, is it, is the goal to increase enrollment?
No, I think that's a benefit of the program, but the goal really is to increase the rigor and ensure that our students are prepared for what awaits them when they graduate high school, and making sure that they're having the access to high levels of learning at, in every grade level at every school. We talked about, Angie Wagner is here, one of my kindergarten teachers, and this is her 29th year teaching, and when we first started having these discussions, she said, I have the best kids. They're not motivated. How do we get them motivated and excited about learning? And I said, we have to do school with our kids. We can't be doing school to our kids. And so when our kids come in and have questions, why aren't we getting, how do we teach them to get those questions answered, and how does it apply to our standards, and how does it apply to our world? Mrs. Padilla, one of our kindergarten teachers who presented tonight, we were on high heat day, and the kids said, well, why are we on high heat? Well, it's too hot to go outside. Is it so hot that we can cook an egg outside? Boy, wonder. We wrote it on a Wonder Wall. She brought in a frying pan. She brought in an egg. They taught about hypothesis. Those, that's a real-world application, but those kids were engaged and excited about learning, and were able to fit it into our standards.
Again, that doesn't really relate to the increased enrollment.
I, I believe increased enrollment would come because we would perform, our grade would go up. We're currently a C school.
So are there going to be efforts to market this program?
Yes, we would work with Terry Locke in his office, definitely. We cannot say we're an IB school until we're authorized, but we can have parent information meetings, social media. We have a wonderful parent here tonight, a neighborhood parent, and word of mouth sometimes is the best way to get it out.
It would be Mr. Worth, the only IB or PYP program in the area, and being on the west portion of our boundary, we feel there would be individuals that are very interested. But the other thing that our parents are very interested in is pathways. Parents come to us and say, where does my child go from kindergarten, first grade? They want to see what that pathway looks like. We've seen that when we developed DLI schools, dual-language instruction schools, when we developed the CTA, they always ask, where does my child go from here? So by creating this pathway, and even in, even in charters, they're very successful at creating that pathway. And that's what we are doing here, is attempting to do, is to create that pathway from preschool. You'll find yourself at the end of 12th grade being that 21st century graduate with an IB diploma, with a large scholarship, going to which college of choice. So we do think the caption rate is going to be much higher, but we also, one of the benefits too, is building our IB program at Chandler High by having direct feeds from our elementary and junior high.
But again, back to the marketing. If you want to market for next school year, that needs to be starting now, and building a, building a method to do that. You know, we're in great competition with other districts, and we've got a great story. At the end of the day, if the parents aren't aware of it, reception's reality type thing.
I did, I did do a little bit, I talked to Dr. Peterson, who was the superintendent at Scottsdale when they started the Anasazi program, and he said that one, you know, it took off pretty, pretty well, and it attracted people, so it's actually really effective. It takes, it takes a lot of time to set the program up and to get the, get the certifications and everything, but it's, it's a long process, you know?
And Jen Waldron at Anasazi is working amazing things with there, too. And that's why the important part, too, is also working with our community partners, because when businesses are moving in to the area, working with the city of Chandler, knowing that we have this program, and they're coming internationally, they want to be able to send their kid to that school that has that international curriculum. I know Mr. Schlitter already received a phone call from a family from Poland, who has a three-year-old, and they're moving to Poland, and they're going to put him in an IB school, and when they come back to Arizona, will we have a school for them to go to?
Okay, again, my thinking is, we need to prioritize telling our story.
Absolutely.
Now, the last question is, you know, there's additional costs. Do you have a ballpark? To me, it's kind of immaterial, but it's kind of curious. You said there was some additional costs. Do you have a ballpark on that?
The candidacy fee every year is about, is $4,500. When you apply for authorization, it's $8,000, and then salary and benefits for an IB coordinator, as well as world language. Being creative on how we can use our current staffing, as well as full-time, part-time. If I were to give you an estimate over three years to do all this program, I would say around $300,000, which is about 80 kids.
$300,000 over how long?
Three years.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Worth, just to add to that, results-based funding provides opportunity for us to use those funds for duplication of quality programs. And so one of our sources for that is our results-based funding, which, which is one of our accounts that we struggle sometimes to, because, because our proof of concepts take a while to, to put the goodness into it, and the, and the amount of work that needs to go into it for our community to buy into the program, we feel those funds will be utilized well to get this proof of concept off the ground. Also, they can't advertise that they're, is this correct, Kristin?
Right.
You can't advertise that you're an IB school until you make it through the first rounds?
Yes, you can say, once you are in candidacy, you can, you can say, we are an IB candidate school, but you cannot stamp a banner up on our school with the IB logo. It's like Disneyland, copyright issues.
If I understand Mr. Worth correctly, we can market the journey, we just can't market the destination yet, so, but we can definitely market the journey.
Yeah, Mr. Worth, as I said, as Mrs. Kinghorn mentioned, I've had a couple conversations on the phone with individuals outside of the district, and while, you know, there's no commitment to what Anderson was going to go through, there's certainly, we certainly, there's a buzz out there about the journey that they're about to take on. And obviously, what she said is, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and I think the offshoot is, she's, the location of that school and the commitment of the staff perfectly poised to certainly retain the students we have, attract additional students into this district, both moving into Chandler, as well as perfectly poison the location to maybe pull some students in from outside of the district, and to maintain what's already a pretty strong open enrollment at that school already.
So, Mrs. Berry is about to have a heart attack, but I wouldn't let costs get in the way of making this program succeed.
I can tell you that we are, we are committed with replication money, with replication funds, to make, to get this program up and running, and to see it through, and then talk about how we sustain it.
We have the resources, so don't.
We do. I'm assured both by you, and you can be assured by me, that we, I guess I shouldn't say we have the resources, but I think we do, so thank you.
That's like music to their ears as well.
That's having spent many years with Mr. Worth as a principal and a teacher, and knowing that when he tells me we have resources, we have them. Sorry, Mrs. Berry.
Did we, did we take all of your questions already?
One of them? Yeah, so first, I wanted to say thank you to all of you. It's very clear that your professionalism and your desire to do amazing things for your students, and I know this is not a small undertaking, so thank you so much for doing that. I did have a few questions, and I was curious if you could be transparent a little bit about what are some of the challenges for IB schools? You kind of referred already to, you know, the modifications that would have to happen for students with special needs, which, by the way, I'm so happy to hear that you guys are working towards this program, because sometimes our programs really are geared towards one segment of our population and not to all our students, and so that's another wonderful aspect of this program. But if you could give us a little more of the, what are the cons? Because I know you're kind of here to tell us the pros.
Yeah, absolutely. And I bet you can even ask my people in the back. One of them is going to be the time. It is very time-consuming, and that's why you are in candidacy for so long, because this is not, like I said, this isn't a program you buy. This isn't a textbook you get. It is the teachers, working with our IRC coaches, working with IB, looking at our standards, unwrapping those standards, what rigor are we going to be offering in the classroom, and how do I now plan a lesson around our IB themes? And that's what we call the plans of inquiry, so the POIs. And you have to do a year-long plan of inquiry in every grade level, and they cannot overlap. And so there really is going to be, how are we rearranging our master schedule to make sure that we're finding common prep time for those teachers to work with the IB coordinator? Hiring an IB coordinator, so someone who knows how to do this, that could, that's another hurdle. Anasazi got very lucky, Jen did over there, she posted the position, and someone who already worked in another IB school was moving here to Arizona and took the job. I was like, where do you live? So that is another one. And I think more, too, is then being able, and like Becca had said earlier, our teachers are starting to dip their toes into it. It's feeling comfortable to take those risks as a teacher. How am I going to, as a teacher, be able to, I've created this lesson, I've created this plan, I've taken all interdisciplinary teaching, and now I'm going to present it to my students, and it may fail, and being okay with that. And that's the great thing about our mission statement, is that we, we want you to take risks. We are, we want, we're empowering you to be a problem solver. Now our teachers are going to model that. But as a teacher, that's scary. And then as a leader, how am I to make sure that they're continuously getting that coaching, that professional development to move forward?
Did anyone want to add anything? No.
Becca? She looked hesitant.
I can say that it would definitely be the commitment of the time, but I think what is most exciting as a classroom teacher, and that my colleagues are excited about as well, is getting to really actually take risks and try different things in our classrooms. I've already kind of dived into a little bit of like the Wonder Wall, let's ask questions about things, and you have to release some of that control to your students. It's that model of, you know, I'm in the pool with them, and I'm moving across those models of inquiry, and then I'm out of the pool with them, and they're driving this bus now, you know? They get to swim and be in charge. So I think that a little bit of, there's some nerves around it. It's definitely going to be a time commitment, but this is my eighth year at Anderson, and I work with the most passionate people in the world, and we all want what's best for kids, and I really think that we have, you saw the pie chart, the biggest piece of the pie there, really wants to commit to giving that time. I think it's just some of the logistics that make people nervous, but mostly, we're really excited and wanting to commit and give this to our community.
Thank you. So just one other thing I wanted to kind of comment on is that I really appreciate this program, because it has a great link between, you know, national science standards with inquiry, and NCSS C3 framework for social studies inquiry, and it's great that, you know, it's going to be a smoother transition into those kinds of things as well, and has a nice fit for, for those. And I did have one question, it's kind of more for Mr. Narducci. So you know how we've had conversations about how I would love to see more visual art instruction in our classes, and it's a challenge because of, you know, limited resources? And I noticed that art is one of the pieces of this. Would visual art be included in that, and what might that look like?
You know, thank you, Ms. Brunner, for asking that. When this concept was first developed, we were, we were still looking at the future-ready part, and having the student-centered learning at the middle of this, which is like our personalized learning, right? We want it at the middle. But when you theme that together, the integration of arts and language are very relevant to this. So we would have to figure out how we would do that and work with that and help with that, because it's, it's above and beyond the art masterpiece program, which is a different type of program. It's more of the appreciation and, and, and the exploration of art medium and artist. What, what we would have here is an integrated approach, and that, you know, it almost brings me back to when I first started teaching myself, and then we had to get out of it because of No Child Left Behind, and go to standards-based education, and siloed subjects to teach, and they couldn't touch each other, because the food couldn't touch another plate, right? But we're going to see an infusion of, of curriculum here, so kids can make relevant applications to their learning, and they will be in a social sciences, or, I'm sorry, a social, a social sciences or a science, and see math and language. So the same thing with art. It will be infused not as a standalone, but it'll be infused in their products. And so we will have to relook how we, how we deliver that in this model.
So that brings up just my one concern that I have, as excited I am, as I am about this, is the, the limited time that teachers have, and to be expecting them to incorporate all these things and learn a different way of approaching instruction, and then to also include other expertise that they may or may not already have. I'm wondering if we have anyone in the district that might be able to provide more supports, and maybe some lessons or activities or things that they could kind of filter in for teachers, so they don't have to do everything from scratch? Maybe we have an art teacher at a middle school or a high school that could get one section to contribute? I don't know, just brainstorm some ideas. And also, my last question is, do we have any resources that could help, maybe in the summer, to provide additional pay for the teachers who are doing so much work that, you know, maybe there's a week of, you know, whatever they need to do, I don't know, you know, how it can be spread out, so that we, they could get some kind of compensation for all these probably hundreds of hours of work that they're doing over everyone else?
First of all, great ideas, thank you very much, and I think we can build on those ideas as the program gets developed. The second part, yes, resources available, and, but I think we have to have a sustainable availability of those resources over time, because they're going to find out a month in that they need to make some changes and tweaks. And I say you make those at the point of discovery and don't wait, right? Because it's just easier not to do that. So I think we would develop those resources and have that as a part of a budget projection for them throughout the year, which may include summer and any other times that they're working toward that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Barb or Lindsay, are you guys back on the phone?
I'm on the phone, but I can't really talk right now. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Unless anybody else has any other questions, I think we're, I think that's got us taken care of. Thank you very much, guys, we appreciate you bringing this to us.